We got thirty-one.
Twenty-nine.
Let's see, this is Horizon, what do you have?
Horizon. Do we know if we're good? We got this.
We don't have.
Call to order the October two thousand twenty planning and zoning meeting. Mr. Courier, if you can call.
Commissioner Pitts.
Yes, sir.
Chair McKenney.
Yes.
Commissioner Hilton.
Here.
Vice Chair Beatty.
Here.
Commissioner Dawson.
Here.
You have Quorum, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the minutes from the September two thousand twenty. Do we have any changes or additions to those? If not, do I have a motion to accept?
I'll take a motion to accept.
All up there?
All right. Unanimous?
Yes. All right. Old business, unless there's objection to that, I'd like to move that behind the two items of new business. But I would like to have a discussion on those.
Yes.
Before we adjourn tonight.
I agree.
Any issues with that? So, the first item of new business. It is application for preliminary plat approval, Kahaba Shoals LLC on Roland Road, parcel zero-two-six, zero-two-four, two hundred twenty-six point five-three acres, thirteen lots. At this time, we will open the public hearing. And we've got Mr. Fallon here. You can make your comments afterward.
Sure. My name is Chair and Commissioners, thank you all for letting me attend tonight. This has been quite the project so far, putting everything together. To start off, I just want to address a couple of things that I got from Mr. Courier's review. Just a couple of things that I can point out and call attention to. Preliminary plating has been provided to EMC as right now, that's the only utility we would be providing throughout the community. Is right now, they're just kind of on standby, waiting for us to get preliminary approval to start the process of work within the community. Mr. Courier noted that we did not call out where the right-of-way for power would be going on the plat. The right-of-way will actually be in the Loop roadway. So we just, once we create the new roadway going into the community, the power will actually use that exact same needs mechanism. So we won't be clearing anyone who needs it there. Moving down, the EMC Engineering has been contracted to manage all of the erosion control aspects of the project. They've built out a full engineering plan of the road. It'll show us exactly, you know, any sediment ponds or potential ponds that we'll need in place, any erosion control aspect. And between them and Cottage Construction Company, they'll both be monitoring that process as we work through it. Assuming that we get approval to move forward with preliminary plat, then at that point, we'll begin the application for the erosion control permitting for the state, which EMC Engineering will be handling all that as well. There was a few things that Mr. Courier has notated on here, I believe, that are more of, we just missed as far as notating on the plat and some blurring. The biggest thing I've come to you tonight requesting is a waiver for private road access. In, within what we're requesting, we're requesting a twelve-foot wide road surface with four-foot shoulders on each side. The covering of the road surface will be asphalt buildings. Part of the reason we're requesting this private road access, it will be behind the gate. But we're also concerned because just down Roland Road, the county has had to come in and put up signs about illegal dumping, where people will continually dump the trash on the side of the road. Our largest concern is if we open up a poet roadway going this close to the river with no homes, residences, cabins, whatever that you might place down there, that we'll continually have a problem policing it and keeping people from using it like it's their own, although it's not. So that's the reason we want to keep it a gated community. Inside of that, we understand that it'll be a private road, which will not be maintained by the county. It will be maintained through a homeowners association. And we've put together an assessment plan, which will be assessing the roadway once every quarter and maintaining it as needed. In regards to emergency access plan, because the gated access will be electronic, emergency fire sheriff's department will all be given a specific code to access the gate in the case that they need to access it in an emergency. So they'll have the ability to ingress and egress as they need it. So I have one more note. I think the only thing that we really missed is a large piece on this, is the cul-de-sac aspect. You know, depending on what the Planning and Zoning Commission sees fit here, you know, we're going to hear what you'd like to do. If I could make a suggestion, I would like to see us place two cul-de-sacs. One on the unapproved road name, which one would not be on the unapproved road name. The Rocky Creek Trail, which Mr. Courier pointed out, is too close to an existing road. The terrain in that part would make it difficult to place a cul-de-sac there. But we could put one at the river and one on the continuing Kahaba Shoals Drive as well, if we need to. Other than that, are there any questions that you may have, any concerns? I'll be glad to answer them.
Are you going to have to cut these roads in, or they already exist, or just a preference?
So, there is to a degree an existing roadway there. You can see on there, there's an old line that notates the old roadway. We're actually moving the road in a lot of places a pretty good amount. You know, some of this is to, mainly we're trying to straighten it up, we're trying to make it easier on EMC power as far as running utilities in. But from a maintenance aspect, cutting as much out of, you know, as many curves out of it. Also, by moving the road, we're going to move it to the places where the road's the highest, so that we can control the water flow. So as we build this road out, this road will be built to Georgia DOT spec with the exception of asphalting. So it'll have, anywhere that requires culverts under the road, it'll all be RCP, which is reinforced concrete culverts. Within the covenants, driveway plates have to be put in according to whatever the county currently requires.
In the, in the sale of the property, in the deeds, you intend on having this roadway deeded as part of their prop, of their ownership and their maintenance as part of their deed that is their responsibility, so when they purchase the property, it would be clear and concise to the purchaser that they're going to be responsible to maintain this roadway.
Yes, sir.
Through their HOA.
Right.
Not personally through the work, but through their HOA is their responsibility, not the county assuming any responsibility inside the gate.
That's correct. So the way we currently have it set up is one of the parcels within the community is your actual roadway. And so every landowner within that, let's just, if it's ten landowners, everybody will own one-tenth ownership in that road. So everybody will own part of that parcel. The HOA will be, hold the ownership of that, which everybody will pay the HOA for maintenance taxes and any assistance that they need to do. And yes, it will be deeded on the, with the properties as they sell.
Do we have, do we have anybody to call in?
We do.
For this?
Yes.
Just checking. Do we have any other questions for Mr. Fallon? Before we move forward, I mean, we can always come back to it, I just didn't want to circumvent somebody's train of thought here.
I read someplace in some of the information, what was the amount of money that the homeowner would provide the associational road maintenance?
So right now, my preliminary estimate is roughly a thousand dollars per. I can't pin that number down to a definitive, because the tax commissioner's office cannot give me an estimate on taxes until I have parcels approved. So my tax estimate is kind of a rough number there, but that's my best guess on, which includes road maintenance.
That's annually?
Yes, ma'am.
And I think it's, if you said it here, you would renegotiate that or look at it after twelve months and then twenty-four months following after that, that it would be reevaluated.
That's correct.
Every twenty-four months.
We just want to, you know, ultimately, the initial taxing, you know, will kind of be a crapshoot. So once we make sure we're aligned there, we'll assess it and make sure we're aligned. And then every few years, we'll readdress it with the association.
Not getting down into the weeds. Property owners pay into this HOA fee. How is all that going to be done? What's the details of that? And it's going to be kept in escrow at a bank and...
So the association will be, it'll be set up at, I mean, there are strict rules and regulations that are governed by the state of Georgia on how homeowners associations are supposed to operate, how often they're supposed to meet, how they're supposed to keep maintenance, how they're supposed to keep money. So all of that will be done by my attorney here locally, as far as setting up the HOA and making sure we're within our legal boundaries.
You actually own one of these lots, right?
Well, currently, I own the whole place.
Right.
But yes, I plan to keep a parcel for myself, that's right.
So you would actually be a member of the HOA?
That's correct. Yes, I have a personal investment in this whole project, just even going forward.
Yeah, my, my, my only concern with the, with the private road, and I think you addressed that with the HOA, is not necessarily the initial purchaser, but ten years down the road, the next, the next round. If, if there's a private road and there's no, no history that trails with that deed, that somebody has to agree to before they purchase it, they buy something and then they figure out, I'm responsible for paying for my rep, repairs to my road. That's what we don't want to have.
And that was the reason, my question.
And the HOA, as long as it's specifically mentioned in that HOA, road maintenance.
And it is attached to the deed.
And it's attached to the deed. So every time that property transfers, that new owner has to agree to that HOA.
Right.
As it stands.
So it never becomes a liability to the county?
That's correct.
Right, and then, sorry, go ahead.
Well, I guess it's been an issue before that, is there a contingency in the event, in the, it got to bed that the economy collapses and, you know, this thing goes belly up? And, and yet you sold three lots down there and now you're unable to maintain the road simply because of the economic factors? I mean, is there a contingency for that?
I'd still fall back on the owners, it would still.
Well, I know, but instead of paying a thousand dollars a month, they're now paying five thousand dollars a month.
I'm just saying, it wouldn't fall, it wouldn't fall on responsibility, it wouldn't fall back on responsibility to the county, is what I'm saying. If it's handled right.
It's your personal business, so.
I mean, if you're the, if you're the second person to buy a lot, he's number one.
Yeah.
You're the second, or the first person to buy it, but the second person to be out there. And nobody else buys it. That road just became you and that second person's responsibility.
That's right, we said the percent of the...
But is that, is that our decision, is it?
Not really.
And I mean, one thing to throw in there too, I mean, and I, we shouldn't discuss assumptions, but if somebody's driving through a private gate, they have to have a code to enter, they obviously know it's not a public road. And I think that's probably some of the problem that you're, we're kind of alluding to here, were issues from the past, is that many of these private roads that we were discussing have no gate. It's open, so it continues to flow from public road to private road, with, other than maybe the sign, there's really no defendant to change in ownership. So as you come through a gated entrance, so, you know, it'll be very distinguishable that you're transitioning from public to private.
Any other questions before we go to Jeff?
All right, we will be contacting the owner of the neighboring property. Mr. Ben Bruton, who wished to be...
Hello?
Is this Mr. Bruton?
Yes, this is Mr. Bruton, how are you?
Hello, this is Doug Courier, you are live at the public hearing for the subdivision that you requested to make comments on. You'll be able to make a statement, and then the planning commissioners may have questions for you. You have the floor.
Sure, thank you so much. Well, I've been following this on YouTube, and I appreciate being given the opportunity to appear in front of the planning commission. By way of explanation, my name is Ben Bruton, I'm the son of Dr. Sam Bruton and Martha Bruton. And my mother and I, acting, I am a trustee, and we own the property, about two hundred and fifty acres on the river that is directly downstream south of Mr. Fallon's property that he is trying to develop. Mr. Fallon and I have been in touch, he reached out to me, which I very much appreciated. And I have sent a letter to Mr. Courier, that I believe the members of the planning commission would have. Fundamentally, on the specific issue of making a road variance that goes from forty feet to twelve feet, we are not opposed to that, that seems reasonable. What we are interested in is whatever the most minimal impact is possible, given how we use our land. I did review the issues that have been raised by Mr. Courier's staff, and there's some of those things that need further exploration and explanation. So I'm not really prepared to take a position on those, because I think some of that seems to be stuff that Mr. Fallon was going to have to go look into further. And so, really, the main thing, our position is the variance about the road is okay with us. We, you know, don't oppose that. And we want to work together with Mr. Fallon and the county to do something that's responsible. This is a beautiful, in fact, it's probably one of the more beautiful parts of Upton County, Georgia, where my family's owned this land for about fifty years. And I think one thing I would be particularly interested in going forward is to watch the erosion plan. This is rugged, highly erodible terrain, and at the end of the erosion is the Flint River and the Shoals that contain, of course, an endangered plant, the Shoals Spiderlily. So dirt, water, and runoff into the river is a big problem. But I'm sure that Mr. Fallon, in good faith, is going to have a plan to deal with that. I would look forward to seeing that. I welcome any questions that the commission might have.
Thank you, Mr. Bruton. Does anyone have questions beforehand? Okay, I, I think we're, I think we're good, no one has questions. Thank you for, for taking the time to speak with us.
Absolutely, I appreciate the job you all did, Madam Chairwoman, and thank you for allowing me to be here.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have anybody else?
That's it, this is the end, I agree.
If that's the case, we'll close the public hearing and we can ask questions to...
Yeah.
Any questions that we have?
I have just one question that's come to mind.
Okay, go ahead.
I, I guess, having been former law enforcement, I know that a wise call will be able to maneuver on a twelve-foot road. Have you spoken to the fire department to get some input on them? Whether or not their equipment would be in any way not permitted to be able to traverse a twelve-foot road, or...
I haven't spoken to the...
I mean, you're more familiar with the terrain down there, I don't know what, you know, there's a lot of factors. I mean, there's slope, there's runoff, there's washes, there's...
So, I mean, and it's hard to explain here without going into too much detail, but the length upon which we have spent sizable amounts of money in between erosion control plans, road engineering plans. The road, I feel certainly you'd be able to drive a Mercedes all the way to the river once we're done. I mean, I, I have no doubt in my mind whatsoever that there'll be any issue with any kind of emergency management vehicles being able to get ingress and egress of the property.
Well, I guess, do you plan on any kind of turnouts or passing, it might be narrow.
So the goal with the four-foot shoulders is that so these shoulders will gradually taper to your ditches. Which were, our goal is to eliminate any hard drop-offs. So by allowing to have four-foot shoulders on both sides, you should be able to pass any vehicle that's coming to and from if you do meet someone.
Did you not say you had, had copies of erosion from EMC?
I don't have the plans yet, they have not completed them. I would have the contracts, if you'd like to see where we have signed the contract with EMC.
Okay, so you, you do have a contract with EMC to develop erosion control?
Right.
So all of that's already placed?
Right, so I mean, they start a process like this by going in and shooting elevation.
Sure, absolutely.
So all the elevations have been shot, they've got preliminary workings. We actually went back down last, I believe it was last Friday, and walked back through the roads again. There'll be, you know, some places that it may be minor tweaks as we start to build the road out, but probably within the next week, we should have a final layout of exactly the erosion control plans and how the road's going to be built out.
Not that this would make them a play, this may be cabins, not primary homes. But if there was a primary home, school bus access. Can the school bus go down that?
Yes.
Have the ability to turn around without going all the way to a cul-de-sac?
I mean, no, they would not short of turning, turning around in someone's driveway, they would not.
That's not unusual in subdivision cul-de-sacs. Especially a private road, if possible.
I mean, if somebody does live down there permanently, they may have to make the school bus out there on Roland Road, or...
Well, that's what I'm at, kind of where I'm going with that, is that kind of, like I said, that may not apply to this, but trying to think of the different situations. Would, would that be the homeowner association's stance on that? Is the school bus somebody meeting them at Roland Road?
I mean, I, so I think that we're, we're starting to get into weeds there, I guess. It would be a conversation that I would feel like you would want to have with, one, the school bus driver. Do they want, I mean, they're probably not going to want to get out and deal with putting a cody into a gate to try to come in. You know, I think if, at the end of the day, if they wanted to ingress and egress the property, I don't think we would have a problem with it. However, larger vehicles like that are going to be harder on the road.
Like you said, the bus is not going to go on a private drive.
A private road, yeah.
I don't think that they're going...
Will they, will they do that if they have, if they're given access, written access?
County school bus going on a private road.
Not even without written access.
I don't think that, I don't think that county school bus would go on a private, on a private road.
Okay, I was thinking if they had written access, they would.
They would have to, they would have to, apparently.
I think it'd be, it'd be several families down there that, you know, before they would even think about that. And the school buses, they're interested in picking up and dropping off children as quickly and efficiently as they can. You know, going down a private road, especially the way down to the river and then having to turn around, just might be too much for them.
Yeah. Of course, most kids not riding a big old bus anymore.
No, cheese log.
Might be a possibility for, excuse me, might be a possibility for you to provide, provide some sort of a safety zone at the entrance to this road, someplace that would be secure for those children to stand by, waiting for the school bus.
Yes, sir.
School bus is not going to run on a private road.
You know, I mean, one, kind of the way we have this laid out preliminarily is that there will be a wider entrance coming in there, it's about a forty-foot entrance. So there'd be plenty of room for kids to, you know, if this became the case, to be in a place where they'd be safe and out of the way. And another thing, I mean, to discuss that a little further, the gate would be sitting right on the road. The gate will sit fifty to seventy-five feet off the road, so if there are any trucks or trailers, anything like that that needs to ingress the property, they'll be able to pull completely out of the roadway.
Toping the gates.
Toping the gates.
Any other questions?
None.
Yes. Don't?
No, no, I'm good, I'm good. Sorry, I'm good.
Okay. Can I make your...
Sure. Well, I'll start out and then we'll see where we go. Just to hit some of the, I guess, critical or big facts, the owner of the subdivision is Kahaba Shoals LLC. It will be a gated community, as we've discussed. The location is off Roland Road, southeast of Woodland Road, which is also State Route thirty-six. The zoning is agriculture residential. Total acreage, two hundred twenty-six point five-three acres, thirteen lots. The lots ranging from...
Total acreage 226.53 acres, 13 lots, the lots ranging from five acres to 48 acres. We've already discussed the private road, and it will be serviced with millings, and the frontage along the Flint River is approximately 815 feet, a little bit more.
What was asphalt milling? Is that hard gravel? Is that a thing?
So asphalt millings are actually reclaimed asphalt off the road?
Okay.
So after they grind the roads up to resurface them?
Okay. I wasn't familiar with that.
Over a period of time, it is a road.
Rattle?
It's set up, no, it's set up hard.
It'll set up very slowly.
If you got any advice on the set up with the hard.
This aerial photo obviously is not exactly the way the land is configured because the access that you see in your plan doesn't exist, but there's a land swap involved with this property owner here, so the access that you've been talking about is along this property line here, and then the land swap, this property line moves here. So that's the configuration. I guess if you got, you know, there was a decision made not to use this as the access point where there's already one, but to create an additional one over here. You have a better version of the flat in your hands. This is kind of small, see on the screen, but this is the preliminary flat that you presented with, but you should have a large paper version. The rest of this is comments. I'm only going to highlight maybe what I consider the most significant ones that are sort of policy or large. Some of them are just mechanical, what was or wasn't on the flat, based on requirements, and those aren't really design issues, but there are some charges specifically for the Planning Commission in here. Go to, let's see, question, comment number eight. Where we talk about soil erosion and sediment control plans. You will eventually have to have a copy, or we will have to have a copy before this is over. It'll have to be a permit issued, so while you don't have anything right now, you will in the future, you'll see that the requirement actually says that you have to have copies of the plans or evidence of official approval plans at this juncture. So as long as you're happy that you're not going to have it now, but by final plan nine, then we don't really have an issue, but process seems to prefer you to have it now. Obviously, there's costs involved there. And number 12, one of the things that you need to, and please, given your motion, there are some things you actually need to approve. One of those is the name of the subdivision. I'm sure that's not a major issue, but you actually are called out to approve that, so that's, again, comment number 12. All right, go on to 15. And as you can imagine, most of the issues are dealing with the road. I think that the waiver is a little bit bigger than it's sort of envisioned in the request that you got. I don't have those materials on the screen, but you have them in your packet. There's supposed to be a maximum length of cul-de-sac roads or dead-end roads of 1,200 feet. This far exceeds that, so there's really a variance or a waiver required for that length of a dead-end road, actually, two of them. You have the street names, I'm sorry, skip, let's see, 14, right there. We've got basically one name that's approvable, and that is, let's see, where is that? Well, anyway, the one that I addressed was the one that isn't, and anytime there's a similarity between the road name is being proposed and the one that actually exists, you can't have that. And there is a Rocky Creek Road in the county. It's over near Hannes Mello West County Road, so they've got to come up with a different road there. I'm mentioning name, road, names because you have to approve. That's one of your duties, is to approve the names of the roads in any subdivision. Their only real criteria is that it doesn't come close to duplicating any other names existing. Of the existing, right? And in this case, we do, so they'll be proposing another name change at some point in the future. So right now, the only one you can approve is the, I think it's got Kahaba Shoals in the name. The other one will have to be approved at a later date. And then, of course, there's the whole private road issue, which doesn't meet the specs as required. There's, you've got the table in your report, and I was able to get it in here. You'll see Local Street is supposed to have a right of way of 60, and I don't think that's a problem, we have that, but you're seeing that the pavement width is supposed to be 20 feet, and we're being told it'll only be 12. So that, we've got the cul-de-sac issue, which we're not going to have cul-de-sac everywhere they're called for, and I guess if there's any questions about where they will be, or agreeable, or confirm that, yes, you want those where they have proposed them, and not the other places that needs to be discussed. The length of the road, as well as the fact that they won't have the paving. Again, there are other smaller issues, and if you want to discuss those, but I think those are the major issues, as I see it, in the pages of the comments that you've gathered. And that concludes my staff report management.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from that? Do I have a motion?
I think you probably meant to break it down into several questions. I mean, we can, whoever's playing, so, well, I'll make a motion that Kahaba Shoals name be approved for the subdivision.
Okay. All in favor?
I would make a motion that we accept the 12-foot road with the provisions that it's gated, that it's dated, and continually dated as ownership to the property owners' land is purchased, that it will not become a liability to the county.
Yeah, an HOA.
Yeah, that the HOA will maintain that property inside that gate.
Now, does that include the length being approved, as well as the cul-de-sac situation and the paving width? Or is that just the road width?
We could do that all at once. I mean, I don't have a problem with roads like that.
Cul-de-sacs, on this plan, I say dead ends. I don't necessarily say-
No, there aren't.
So you're either going to accept, I think you said there's some places where they would be willing to put them, but maybe you need further-
But depending on what we would ask him to do, they would put cul-de-sacs. If you would ask for cul-de-sacs, I have no problem with extended road length, and I do suspect that we need to ask for cul-de-sacs.
Well, is that necessary? They're kind of dead end to lots, unless these lots going to be five, like Lot Number Eight.
You're telling them they have cul-de-sac if you have emergency vehicles.
Well, that's true.
That's the only reason I think for that, is that you have that ability for that vehicle. If it wasn't for that, I don't see a need for me to-
Well, I guess the issue, if you look where the river is, like on Lot Number Eight, and you put a cul-de-sac right there next to the river on Lot Number Eight, that would kind of diminish, in my view, the value of Lot Number Eight. You know, you had a beautiful view of the river, now there's the cul-de-sac right there. So maybe turnarounds as opposed to cul-de-sacs.
You know what a cul-de-sac is? Just a large turnaround?
Well, that's exactly what it is, but I mean, you could do like little backups or something. I mean, the definition of a cul-de-sac is, I was thinking 80 feet in width.
Right, because of specs.
That's pretty wide.
I mean, the whole purpose of agreeing to the 12-foot is to diminish the impact on the environment down there.
I just thought it might be easy to engineer when you're building a road, maybe some wider areas where vehicles could pass, and then, well, not what the mill, you know, the milling, asphalt milling, but I mean, if they put a strip that was wider, you know, that give vehicles. Some folks don't want to drive on them immediately. I mean, I'm just thinking, I'm just discussing, you know, I'm not proposing anything. My concern was, you know, just bringing up the fire trucks, they'll get stuck in a minute. And, you know, you know, standing on the river, it's maybe kind of wet, and how hard is it driving?
Is it rocky?
Rock.
In some places, it's granite, probably.
Maybe it's not going to be an issue. Instead of cul-de-sacs, maybe use turnarounds as a... Because I was going by the requirements for cul-de-sac, to me, that seemed pretty, seemed level high.
The raise of cul-de-sac is 55 feet. I want to leave.
Oh, 80.
80.
Who is going, your nearest neighbor's going to be on the road?
I'm understanding what you're asking.
Who is, who lives where you've come off Roland Road? Yes, your nearest neighbor. Who is?
So, there is a home right there at the Michael, Vincent Michael Johnson, right on Roland Road, and then directly across the road, one house down is Mr. Charles McCann. Those are my two closest neighbors that actually live there.
Could it be worded that emergency access, emergency, how do we do it?
Can I mention one thing?
Sure.
So, it doesn't necessarily show this clearly here, but below Lot Five-
Yeah.
Where it says 100-year.
Yeah.
So their roadway will actually continue to the river, so in the case of, let's say that EMS need to get down there and help rescue someone out of the river or whatever, that road would continue with an area that they would be able to turn around at in that-
Is that a 100-foot length, 100-year lease?
No, that's 100-year floodline mark.
Okay.
Is what that is.
Okay, okay. Floodline, yeah.
Yeah, but that road, that space there will actually, that road, you can see the old markings, you'll have a cul-de-sac or an area that they will be able to turn any kind of emergency vehicle.
Is that a little bit round tight?
You going to maintain that? I suppose you say?
The only place it is really complicated to do a cul-de-sac is on what we had proposed as being road name Rocky Creek Trail, and that's just strictly because it's terrain on that side. But as far as going towards Lot Eight, it could accommodate some type of turnaround to make it easy for any kind of emergency vehicles to move. But at the same time, I say that in the same breath, the same, we're trying not to clear it's a-
Can we do, we approve the 12-foot road bed with the provision of the erosion plan including any turnaround access for EMS vehicles or whatever? That would be, have to be included in the erosion plan?
Yeah.
Can we do it that way?
Well, we're approving the tentative plan, and the big issue is the 12-foot, that's the variance that is really the question.
Well, that's what was requested, but again, I think the length, I mean, this is a lot longer dead-end road than is called for or permitted by the ordinance. There are zero cul-de-sacs. The ordinance calls for cul-de-sacs. So, and then, of course, it calls for a wider paving, so there's a number of issues.
A number of issues, but I think we just say that there has to be engineered in the final plan some way for emergency vehicles to turn around.
Yeah, that's right.
And believe that, you know-
At both the end of Rocky Creek, well, what was going to be Rocky Creek Trail-
At both, the end of both of these, Kahaba Drive-
Or Shoals Drive, Coggs Drive.
Should be some, some provision for EMS turnaround.
Yeah.
For large vehicle turnaround, even if it's truck delivering building material. I mean, somewhere, you know, and that can be handled through the erosion plan when they do the final, when they do the road layouts and all that kind of stuff, I guess.
Did you translate in, add that into a sentence? Did you translate into a sentence?
Far from a sentence.
But we need to, oh, you- I could take a long time to get it corrected.
You'll revise it later.
You might want to start over with that motion.
You'll revise it later.
Well, it'll be in the minutes, and if I'm wrong, we can get it corrected.
Okay.
So I've made the motion. But I guess basically, all those issues that we talked about, you are approving. The only thing with it a little fuzzy is what these turnarounds, these cul-de-sacs look like. There needs to be some sort of provision there.
In the final plan, it needs to be-
But maybe it doesn't equal the cul-de-sac requirements of the ordinance.
Right, right.
The officer gets a variance on that, too. As long as an emergency vehicle, and you may want to talk to Richard Hickman, I guess I can give him a third thing, is this a third?
This is a third.
You may want to talk to Richard Hickman. I can draw it to what it takes for an emergency vehicle to turn around, but provisionally approve this, provided that there is a, in the final plan, that there is a provision for emergency vehicle to be able to turn around.
Before the final, before the final, we got the sub-erosion plan and everything anyway.
Yes. Over to you.
We still need the name of the one road. We need that approval.
Yeah, the Kahaba Shoals.
Kahaba Shoals Drive is okay. Rocky Creek Trail has to have a different name.
Do you need a name right now?
Do you have a proposal?
I was focused on the larger pieces at hand today when I got that.
We call it the non-name road right now.
I mean, before anything goes forward with this, this needs to be part of that revised plan, showing that.
You married, guess all your wife and ass to wish you once a rug.
I've already done that. That's how I'm going to wear my hat.
All right, Madam Chair, I think that takes care of all the mandatory approvals.
So we haven't voted yet.
Well, we voted yet.
We got second, we got the-
I'll second. I don't know who made the proposal.
He started it.
You started it. It's been, but I'll second it.
Okay.
With those-
With the provisions that we're talking about.
And all the provisions, there's some of that-
The guys back on the-
That's on that tape.
Yeah, it's on the tape. And you're clear on what we've talked about.
Yeah, if I understand it correctly, it's gated, private road follows the deed going forward, the HOA continues the maintenance of the road, and then the engineering plan for the road, that we will address some type of turnaround that will accommodate emergency vehicles.
Yes, we're on the same page.
Okay.
On both roads.
Yes, ma'am.
And you also now, we haven't taken the vote on the name of the road, or we have?
No, well, that's also-
We put that in there too.
It's all part of the same motion.
Yes.
We approve at least that one name that can be approved.
Got you.
So how a motion took, with those conditions, you second it? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so that is a vote on the overall preliminary plat.
Yes.
Thank you. All right, as you know, basically, the ordinance allows you two years before you have to come back, or no more than two years, to come back with your final plat. This is sort of your soft approval. I mean, you see the ordinance basically says it needs to substantially look the same, but you know, we've got some variances from a little bit here, a little bit there, changes in what we've got here. in what we've got here. Obviously, if there are some minor issues, that we can take care of those too. Um, you know, staff does really make a recommendation preliminary plat stage, you see our observations, and the big decisions are made here, but in the final plat stage, we want the Ts crossed and the Is dotted.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
You're welcome.
All right. Next item is an application for rezoning, REZ 2020-07 Roland Hockenhold, 420 East County Road, parcel 043C 031, from AR to C2. Do we have someone?
Yes, just the owner of this case.
Okay, all right. So we'll open the public hearing.
Yes, sir.
This is Doug Courier with Upson County. You are live at the public hearing for your rezoning request. Uh, the floor will be yours, and then the Board of Planning Commission may have some questions for you. Uh, you may make a statement, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, you're saying I need to make a statement now?
Sure, you can, you, if you have something to say to the planning commission, you can do so now.
Okay, uh, the property I, I had built, uh, a number of years ago, and it was zoned back then, and unfortunately, I stopped receiving bills, and unfortunately, it went out of, uh, uh, it, it ceased to be, uh, zoned, uh, unfortunately, and when I found out, I've been trying to find a way to get it back zoned, and, uh, it, I, I use it for storing my equipment, and I will clean some rugs there since I have the space to do it, and I was just hoping I could get it rezoned, um, for that purpose.
Okay. Um, do we have any questions while we have him on, on the course?
Ask him if he's going to have an office there, or a telephone, or-
Mr. Hockenhold, are you going to have, like, your office there? Um, will it be any, any-
A commercial front?
Like a commercial storefront, people walking in, customers walking in?
It was at one time. Uh, my wife will like to do some filing and a little bookkeeping there. Um, at present, I don't believe I will be turning it back into a store again.
Okay. Um, and do you, as far as, as the building itself, or you're, this is the same building, you're just going to reopen the same building, you're not looking to change that?
Yeah, by my, same building.
Yeah.
No.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Hockenhold, I think, I think we're good, we don't have any other questions for you, so I'll hang up now, and we'll get Mr. Courier's staff report.
Okay.
Thank you for speaking with us.
All right, thank you, ma'am, for calling.
All right.
All right, bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
And we did not have anybody else request to speak at the moment.
Okay, so we'll close the public hearing, and get your, absolutely, staff report.
This is fairly straightforward. The property is currently, and from all records I can tell, has always been AR. The request is to C2. Basically, uh, the category that he, this type of business would fall under would be any consumer business or service. Uh, the property is approximately one acre, it contains a single 1,600 square foot metal This is the crux of what happened here, is the occupation tax history. Um, I believe, um, you know, he, you can see that actually this business predates zoning in 1988, it does not predate occupation tax, but it does predate zoning, which started in 1995. So there was no zoning when he opened the business. Uh, so he did pay occupation tax from 88 to 96, and then for some reason, there was a really big gap. And so when we found out about that gap, uh, we said, well, now you've lost your, uh, your legal non-conforming use. It, it still was AR, but because the business preceded it, it was allowed to continue. And the way that the ordinance works is if you continue to pay your occupation tax, that maintains your legal non-conforming status, that maintains your grandfather. Once you do not pay that for 12 months, you lose your grandfather, and that's what happened here. While he did then, uh, continue to pay occupation tax, he basically, at least, he told us, moved his business to his home, and it became a home occupation. I guess something has triggered his desire now to not have a home occupation, and to, to resum his property where he previously had the business. So all of this is, was tied into never having commercial zoning, and, uh, basically, the occupation tax payment lapses. Uh, AR is the predominant zoning in the area, as you can see. We have general descriptions to guide us in terms of what sort of uses would be in AR and C2, and certainly, the AR uses, um, is not a zoning district that would include the type of use that he has had in the past, and I guess even the, the lesser office use that he's talking about, it would be more appropriate in the C2 zoning district. You and the Board of Commissioners have general review standards by which state law and our local ordinance require these type of requests to be evaluated by. Um, the staff analysis, the proposed use is one that, is one that has been there for a long time, just not recently, because of the reasons that we just discussed. It's been a relatively low, uh, intensity type of use. Um, the zoning, as you will see when we go to the map, is a bit of a spot zoning. Now, this is a mixed area. If you go between 19 and Potato Creek Heights neighborhood, one being solid commercial and the other one being very single-family residential, you have a mix of uses, even though you don't necessarily have a mix of zoning. Staff does recommend approval for the following reasons. This is a fairly low compatibility, uh, low-intensity use, carpet cleaning business, compatible with the type of uses around there, uh, consistent and compatible with the land use review standards, and, uh, this is reusing a building that clearly was commercial at one time and will be used now. Could it be repurposed for other types of businesses, or something other than a retail type business? Yes, it could be your consumer business. Obviously, there's a room for the planning commission's guidance. Um, maybe I should have zoomed the aerial out a little bit more, but you can see, um, this is the location, the building that you'll see in your packet and, uh, in the photos. You've got a church here, and you've got a church over here, so these are certainly non-residential uses in the AR. Of course, churches are allowed by special exception in the AR, and these churches probably predate zoning also, so, of course, as you-
What, yeah, what's that right there? That's a private residence?
Is this here?
Yeah.
Yes, this is all back here, private residences, back here. And then, of course, the, over to the east, you've got Potato Creek Heights, and then as you head in this direction, you've got, uh, US 19, eventually, multifamily in there, some businesses, uh, et cetera, on East County Road. Here's the zoning. Now, if he, again, if you just eyeball this, you've got a request for C2 here, surrounded by AR. Of course, this AR is a church, this AR is a church, but you do have this industrial zoning here, you've got commercial zoning, this is the property that is across from the Fortner property, uh, that commercially zoned property. And, uh, so that's generally what you've got in the area. So again, I'm not sure that the uses or the mixed-use orient, orientation shows in the zoning. And that's the very simple picture of the, uh, structure itself. There's not much to the lot or what's on it.
But if it's rezoned, you can put any kind of commercial business there?
Right, unless you limit it, you know, as you have so many zonings before, to certain uses. I mean, that's certainly something within your ability. In the staff report, I talked about conditional approvals. That concludes the staff report, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any questions, comments?
No.
I'm, I'm not a big fan of spot zoning. He lost his grandfather, and, um, you know, it might be all right for a carpet, carpet cleaning business to come back in there, that's what it was before, but my concern, I guess, is something else going in there, an automotive shop, or, you know, something that's, uh, less, uh, residential, because, I mean, it's obvious, that's a residential area. The back street is residential, several houses along the way, they're all residential. Yes, there's a couple of churches there, uh, you know. I mean, if we approve it, I think it may be restricted to the carpet cleaning business. He seems like it was going to be like a low-intensity kind of thing, that you barely even noticed he was there, he was going to wear an outfit.
I mean, when I asked the question, it's not, it's not-
Not even necessarily have an office there, or a telephone, or whatever.
Customers aren't coming to his location, he's going to-
I'm, I'm okay with that, as long as we keep it to that. My concern is, once we rezonate C2, anything can go in there, any kind of commercial business. You could put a convenience store in there, which the neighbors may not be real high on.
The next business should be compatible with rug cleaning, essentially, is what you're saying.
Low intensity. I mean, you know, that whole area is just kind of a ad hoc, I mean, it's kind of-
He's been doing that a long time.
Sorry.
Yeah, Rowley's been, Rowley's been that forever.
Yeah, I understand, but, I mean, look, that, our whole, our whole reason for existence is to avoid the continuation of, uh, practices, I guess, for lack of a better term, where, you know, we create, she was like that.
Pitch your recommendation.
Yeah.
Say something, Sam.
Put, put all of that, you just said, I told you.
All that I just said.
Play it again, Sam.
Um, I move that we approve, uh, the rezoning from AR to C2, with the caveat, or with the restrictions that it maintain, uh, remain a carpet cleaning business, that if, you know, Mr. Hockenhold ever wants to sell it, or open up another business, that it loses that C2 status, and, and no other type business can go in there without the approval of this board. That's my notion.
I'm good with it.
So I second.
I second it.
All of that?
You're standing, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Thank you.
I learned a new word about the caveat.
Caveat.
Just spelled.
There is a caveat.
I do.
That means it's a monkey-
C-A-B-O-T.
There could be a monkey wrench in the match, is what it means. We would put it in the, just hope so and stuff.
All right, um, next item is, going back to old business. Um, we've got three items on here, the amateur radio towers, the gateway, um, overlay zoning district, and tiny homes. My suggestion is that, um, I think the gateway, um, overlay district is probably the most supported for the county. Um, if I had to get, I mean, I don't know your opinion, that's mine, but-
Completely agree.
Um, I think that's something we need to, to focus on and, and move, try to move, get something moved forward on that.
Aggressively.
Um, the, uh, the amateur radio tower, I, I think we're, you may say differently, Doug, but I, I think, are we to the point that we can, can make some-
Recommendations.
Recommendations and-
Right, you've got at least one citizen out there who I guess has watched most of these when it's on, on the agenda, and he basically says, I just want you to raise the level of the height that I can have it at, and he'd be happy with it being done there. Um, but this is your opportunity to take a more comprehensive look, to see if there are other things that we need to look at relative to those.
Do we not have any amateur radio towers we have in the county?
We do not. Okay, which, which one would this start?
Uh, let's, i- i- if you guys want to do this, and we think we can get this done, let's get the radio tower out of, out of the way, so we can move to the gateway ordinance.
Was he, I'm trying to remember, his, his height was that he was wanting to raise it to was-
A hundred.
A hundred? Uh, I think I remember, I think I remember something in paperwork, a hundred and twenty was a, a sort of a standard in some areas, that if we went to a hundred and twenty, long as it was a, that the tower was in a situation of placement, in a situation where if it failed, it wouldn't, in, in, you know, wouldn't endanger, wouldn't endanger anybody else's property?
Yeah, it, it cannot, it, it has to be setback at the height of the tower, a setback has to equal or exceed the height of the tower.
Yes.
Exactly.
Equal or exceed, I like that, it has to equal or exceed the height of the tower.
So if you, if you want to do a two-hundred, or a hundred and twenty-foot tower, it's got to be a hundred and twenty feet from every property line.
Some of the towers require, uh, cables and support, but we need the-
One of, one of the, when we, when we talked about this before, the notes that I've got on this, and you guys can correct me, but we talked about, um, um, the building permit, we talked about building plans, structural plans.
Yes, he was talking about, will he use some, um, personal management, management reports?
Right, um, and we talked about the setbacks on the property line, and then the other question that we left off on is liability insurance. If that were to fall, and it falls on somebody, are we going, is that something we're going to require? That was one of the last questions that we talked about.
I think if, if the home, if his home insurance is probably going to require-
If he has a home.
Yeah, if he has a home, his home is just going to require him to have, have, to have that covered for, for that.
But if you don't have that, if you don't have a home there, you just have a piece of property, or-
But if you, but, but, but if you've got a tower there, and you've got to have something there to be able to come in and hook up your radio, have your radio there, so you can have a, a building.
A building, but that doesn't mean you have to have a home that requires, uh, homeowner's policy or liability code.
Can you have, Doug, can you have a radio tower, an amateur radio tower, without-
Probably in AR. Probably not in the R, R1, R2, R4, because we can't have an accessory structure without a principal structure. a principal structure. But in AR, you may have an accessory structure without the principal structure, so, and that's, of course, where all of your cell towers have been so far has been in AR.
Is any requirement on cell towers for, you know, liability insurance and stuff like that?
Sure.
Well, the fall is certainly addressed in our ordinance. I'm not sure if there is insurance referenced in our ordinance. I think, if I had to say one or the other, I don't think it is. But you can't say that for sure without looking for insurance references.
A cell tower's not an amateur tower. Are we looking at all towers or we just look at that?
Just amateur radio. Just looking at what was said when that was set up, I guess. Setback's equal to exceeding.
And you, just to repeat what you said, he's looking at using some kind of ad hoc or home construction materials?
Yeah, he mentioned that, that he wanted to be-
He has some used parts that he would like to use.
That he wants to put together and-
And not for the whole thing, but to cut some of his costs.
I think it was something he actually fabricated himself.
Right.
If you want us to call him, if this is not a public hearing, and I sort of told him that in my last email, if you want to talk to him, I can call him.
Well-
I think our biggest concern was, last time, was that we don't have a problem with you using your parts along with a base structure that's manufactured to withstand that. But that's where you come in and you want, you want building plans that show that.
Bottom line, if we take care of setbacks, that setback, that the setback equals or exceeds your property, the length, the tower height for the property line, and any kind of, if we want to attach any kind of liability, then the structure would be on him anyway.
Yeah. The interesting thing is, we live in the South, and Southerners are very prideful or proud of the fact that they can ad hoc something and, you know, put two things together and come up with something new. So, the issue is, some engineering approval, that would almost necessitate saying, well, it has to be professionally installed or professionally manufactured from a known tower company, so forth and so on, and that would eliminate any kind of ad hoc construction or using old parts and pieces and putting something together. Oh, as soon as the engineer, what engineer are we going to get to approve, you know, this house?
I guess that's what I'm saying. If we took care, if we took care of it with the setbacks of equal to or exceeding the height of the tower, it's not going to get anybody else's property, and then the liability issues, then if he-
If I want it to fall on, it's him.
Yeah, if he sticks, if he sticks it up on four fours nailed together with sixteen pin nails, and it falls, it's on him, you know, and his liability.
What, are we going to have a maximum height?
Yeah, I think a hundred and twenty feet, one of them. Now, at some point, it does require additional strapping or structuring or guy wires-
Pencil pipe tile, they're very good.
At what height does that generally come in for that?
I didn't blame myself on that today.
You don't want to kill the spirit of the real ham operator, huh?
No, I don't, and I'm okay with an ad hoc-
Because, I mean, they're-
You know, homemade, that's kind of the whole point for ham operators. It's kind of a home spot.
And they're used regularly in disaster, they're used hugely in disaster situations where the main communications are down, because a lot of them have their own generators to keep the radios up, so that there is communication.
Somebody's got to run a antenna up in a tree. You know?
Yeah.
That's something that can't, it's over two hundred foot tall right now, too.
I mean, that's probably minimal engineering, you know, but it's, you know.
So, here's, here's a-
It's kind of much to the north coast.
Here's a, out of Heisman, I think you gave us one out of Heisman. It says, "Written manufacturers and/or professional structural engineer certification that the antenna support structure has been designed in compliance with the minimum design loads prescribed in the current edition of the State of Georgia adopted standard building code." That is D3 of that. I think these should be by permit only. I don't think somebody should be able to go out there and just look around it or anywhere. I think you need to have some control over that.
Do you agree with the setback rate angle to the height?
Equal to exceeding.
Equal to exceeding.
To the property line, the setback from the property line.
But you want to put that language in there or?
I'm just, I'm just reading what is in this one of how they talk about it. The way I read this, written manufacturers and/or professional structural engineer certification. So, in my eyes, the way I read that is, if he's going to use a manufacturer's tower add some of his handmade parts, then he's got to have a structural engineer that certifies that.
Because if he doesn't, he's going to void, he's going to void a manufacturer's warranty by altering their, by altering their tower. If they have a warranty on that tower, structural warranty on that tower, if he, if he-
He does something to compromise that-
Then he's going to void their-
He voids that-
He's going to void their warranty.
That's right.
Probably won't do that anyway. I mean, maybe he puts one of his own parts on there, he's probably going to void it. Because, you know, the whole liability thing, anything you can do to step away from any liability from something, I mean, you take-
Because if we require them to carry liability, some liability insurance on it, then that's going, would that cover any of the situation there?
Well, it needs to be an engineering firm approved by the county. They can't just, you know, hire his neighbor who, you know, took two years of engineering at Georgia Tech, you know, or-
Yes, you want to say knock out them.
I mean, would you put some language in there?
I've got to do.
Lots of things in there or-
Well, yeah.
Structural engineer.
That's what it says, "And/or written manufacturers and/or professional structural engineer certification." So, if you want to go out and get your own structural engineer, that's fine. That tells me, if you're buying an antenna wholly, you're going to have a manufacturer's certification. But if you're going to add something to it or modify it, then you should have, in addition to that manufacturer's, you should have a professional structural engineer certified.
Well, Doug, what's required for, like, Boit's Radio, I mean, he's got some professional drivers, assuming he's still in the business.
The only thing that's been permitted by my office since I've been here is any big cell towers. Nobody's come in for any of the small ones.
Yeah. You know, the FCC comes into play there, too, with certain requirements for our pipe and restrictions.
You got to go over that one-
Transmitting a wattage and all that kind of stuff.
You got to go over that before 120, before you start worrying about FCC.
Oh, is that the deal?
I think so. I'm trying to remember, I didn't bring my paperwork, I'm not with me, but I think that's-
I thought it was based on frequencies, if you're transmitting on certain frequencies.
Wanting output.
Yeah, and wattage output.
Frequency is controlled, but-
Yeah, I mean, that's controlled, but I'm talking about as high to the tower, you got to get before you do anything with FCC.
I don't know. Well, does anybody have a proposal, a lady here have a proposal, Madam Chair?
Madam Chair, what I've got is, and I can certainly draft something based on the direction you give me. I've certainly got, you can give me either one hundred or a hundred and twenty feet, permit required, the setback, you know, equal to or greater than the fall. So, I've got those three provisions. I know we've talked about insurance. I don't know if we're in the insurance requirement business, but if you want that in your ordinance, I'll put it in there. But I can get you a draft ordinance based on these very minor things, and then you'll have something to shoot at directly, maybe a little bit more time to look at your background materials, which are, I think, for about an inch thick there. And you also will open it up to the citizen who has been interested in watching, and you would now have a public hearing. Again, I can call him now if you want to hear from him, but if you want to wait till a public hearing, you know, I've got his information.
I'd like to see the actual language that you come up with and have his input on that. And I tend to agree with you in terms of the insurance. I mean, you know, liability coverage, it seems to me that that's going to be a rider anyway. You know, because that's some kind of, you know, that's not your normal typical wind, fire, hail type stuff.
Well, maybe you want to require-
This is not like jewelry and guns, you know, this is going to, you have a bunch of those.
You could require that part of the permit submitted will be the part of the insurance provision that covers that. Now, that's assuming that there is one. If it doesn't, you don't have to take the next step to, okay, if you don't have it, you got to get it. You could just say, "We want to see it if you've got it," and leave it at that.
Yeah. And what's the side, they kept finding out in the case of the insurance.
There you go.
At that point, it's a mute point.
And as Commissioner Dawson was saying, is if you get your fall with on the property line, does it matter anyway?
No.
I mean, if it falls on your property and somebody gets hurt, is that going to stop somebody from suing the-
No.
No.
Would your homeowner's insurance cover that? Homeowner's would, wouldn't it?
Homeowner's would, but if you don't have a home there, you're not going to have homeowners.
Well, a homeowner's-
But if, I mean, I'm fine with you not having liability insurance as long as that thing can't fall on your property. Now, if the wind picks that thing up and tears it off and throws it to the next house and it's sticking out of somebody's house, I don't see their homeowner's insurance just laying down and saying, "Well, we'll pay, we'll pay to have this fixed." They're going to be looking at the owner of the tower.
That's, and quite honestly, insurance companies probably going to book on that, too, that goes, says an act of God, it's not, it's beyond our, beyond our scope and comprehension and-
I'm looking at the wind.
So, it was a hailstorm or tornado, and they paid for those, so.
Yeah.
On your own property.
I don't know, and I don't know what the answer is, and I thought we probably need to stay away from requiring any kind of liability coverage or whatever. You know, everybody takes a risk, you know. I do know that my homeowner's insurance covers liability at other places. Like, if I go over to Joel's house and, you know, tear up something of his, you know, he could sue me, and that will go against my liability coverage.
This may be a legal question for the county ordinance, but let them talk about it.
And say, well, is that something?
Don't make that decision.
Ultimately, this is county ordinance, so is that something that the county wants to get into, you know, requiring insurance? And all the caveats, and, you know, make a recommendation to us, which direction they go.
So, are we, are we comfortable in having Doug put together some language not to exceed a hundred and twenty feet height, setbacks equal to or exceeding the height of the tower from the property line?
And if you look at the table, if you have the table, Madam Chair, there's also a couple of heights, let's see, Lamar, Mayweather, and Monroe, where if it exceeds a certain height, then it's a special exception.
Yeah, and I wanted to address that, too. We have originally by right, but I like to see a special exception.
Special exception.
Of course, yes, special.
Starting at a specific height?
I don't have a problem with the height, but-
You're talking about any type of-
We have neighbors that live beside it, where there may be a eyesore or something. You know, I would like at least to have them come in and voice their opinion.
I do, too.
You know, once you let the genie out the bottle, it's hard to get that genie back in. That's why I'm not really crazy about having it by right.
Can I refer it up?
And we can put that in the draft if you'd like. I just, there's a lot of background information on federal regulation that really limits local government. So, we'll have to see, you know, if it's all versus after a certain height. Some of those standards are beyond us. Yes.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, you know, and I see your point exactly, at a certain point, you know, anything over fifty feet. But if I want to put up a twenty-five-foot tower, you know, to, you know, communicate with somebody and, you know, talk again or whatever, I don't have that to scare my neighbors.
I mean, today, it's thirty-five feet, so if you want to leave it at thirty-five feet and have nothing, I mean-
Over thirty-five feet.
Over thirty-five, this is the process you have to go through.
Yeah.
The other thing that I'd like to see is the manufacturers or professional structural engineer.
You like the height of the language? Do we need to, does that need to, if it exceeds a certain height? You know, because if it's a, if it's thirty-five foot-
I think if it exceeds thirty-five feet-
If it's a thirty-five-foot tower, I mean, anything pretty much could, you know, could stand up. If you go to those extreme heights, then-
If you exceed the thirty-five feet, here's, here's what your requirements are. You start getting taller than a house.
Thirty-five feet is not that tall, but I mean, I agree with you, everything like fifty, seventy-five, hundred and twenty feet. And up to a hundred and twenty feet, I think you, you know, something, a hundred and twenty-foot tall, I think you probably do need to have some kind of specked-out something, because that's going to require some additional, that's just a, I mean, a sticky pointy thing, sticking straight up a hundred and twenty feet, it's going to require some support, guy wires and that kind of stuff. Now, what about professional installation? I mean, a homeowner's going to be able to put up a hundred and twenty-foot tower by themselves?
Probably bring in the other M radio operators.
Probably, you know, kind of like a homestay, get a little barn.
If I wanted one, I'd put, I'd figure out a way to get a hundred and twenty.
I don't have a problem with it personally, I'm just spitting both of them in.
The other thing that's on this Heisman, Jeff just brought it to my attention, is no more than one primary antenna support structure shall be permitted on any one lot or building.
So, you can't have an antenna falling, right? I think that's kind of the good language, too. Do we want to just restrict it to one though? What if you have a hundred and twenty-foot tower and a twenty-five-foot tower?
You don't need them both.
Depends on what you're doing.
You could come up twenty, you could come up twenty-five-foot tower and put, and put your antenna on the structure. That's just like the cell towers, they'll, you know, everybody rents space on that cell tower, and at this height, they got their, they got their receiver, and at this height, they got their receiver. So, you could put one hundred and twenty-foot tower, and you could put multiple, you know, receivers and for each signal you're trying to receive off that one tower, you wouldn't have to have multiple towers. One tower would suffice.
So, we're talking about structures?
If you're talking about-
One tower structure.
Hang a radio, you're working with that wave, man.
Yeah, there's two wave bands, you know, you have high glow bands.
Yeah, you're not, you're not burning up airwaves or anything like this.
Are you guys good with what we've talked about, at least getting the language for the next meeting?
Sure, yeah.
Have you got kind of the, just of that, let us look at that? Then we can certainly have, you know, once we see that, if we schedule a public hearing and get this done.
Okay, good idea. And right now, you don't have any new cases? I'm not sure when the deadline is, but I think there's at least one that might come in. But obviously, the fewer rezoning special exception variances you have, the more time you have to work on ordinances. But as you know, we haven't had a lot of time for that because we've had so many of the other things. So we'll see what comes in. Right now, there's nothing in my office, but the deadline is coming up, but there's still time.
All right, good on that. Next thing, gateway ordinance. I know we had some draft language on that.
Yep, there's a lot of bells and whistles in that one.
My ask, and I know that everybody may not have this with them, is that can we be ready to discuss this next meeting?
Yeah, can I get a copy of that? I don't know that I have that.
That would have been one of Meg's meetings when she-
Yeah.
I knew that Meg, so.
I don't remember which, I don't have which meeting it was, but.
That's something we need to, I think we need to seriously address with the new businesses that's coming in town and the draw that they're working to try to get enhanced things here. It's, I think that's huge for our growth is that we address that.
There also.
Aggressively address it.
Doug, you had given us some Hendry County, Florida, sort of ordinances also with the draft. Hendry?
Yeah, for, for Gateway?
Yeah. St. Peter, Minnesota.
Hall, Kelly, Georgia.
Mm-hmm.
What county, Hall?
Hall, Kelly.
Hendry County, Florida. So we can be ready to discuss this, to try to nail something down next, next time that we can send forward. I think that will do a good thing. The tiny homes, if we can get these two things off, that would be the third thing on the list. We've got draft, we've also got some additional information on this. If we don't have a lot next time, then we can certainly dive into this if we get through, get through that. Just to start talking about this again. So if you can bring that information, we'll just kind of talk next time.
I need to step out for a minute.
All right, there's no other issues on the agenda. Any planning commissioner issues or announcements?
I don't have any.
Father, you're running a job, you've got to answer phone calls.
Do you have any issues, announcements? No, I don't, yeah, okay. Mr. Currier?
Tomorrow, nice Board of Commissioners, you've got the Fowler-RV case going. And despite the fact that it's not been there for a while, it's basically in a repair shop I found out yesterday for this weekend. And so it will be going forward, no change there. And then Marjorie McDaniel's case, we've not received any updated information from her. So I guess what was submitted is what the Board of Commissioners will be reviewing.
Do we have an update on the Fort Harris property?
Nothing that's current, but the way we left it pre, well, nothing's happened post-COVID. Pre-COVID, there was a response for a charge to our denial of about 103 points. I sat down with the county attorney and we went point by point by point, giving some just preliminary response to that. And that's where we left it. I, we haven't really, I get a lot of inquiries.
I mean, I just, I haven't heard anything about it, that's what, what made me-
Well, that's, the court system has been at dead, dead stop during COVID, so that's basically it.
Didn't know if there was any more feedback on that. That's the only one that I know that's still hanging out there long-term, I believe, correct?
Yes, so I'll see if there is any more information and I'll get that in an email.
If we don't have anything else, do we have a motion to the yard?
Make a motion.
Second? Oliver?
All right, I believe on our part of the text, rather.
Don't everybody move once?
They're walking out.
If they're sitting right there, I would pay for it.
I'll take it if you don't want it.
Take this again.
I don't need it.
I don't think it'll fit in my bag.
Have a good night, Doug. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Don't let someone do it good for you, leg, man?
Yeah, it's, it's still a little iffy.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
We'll see you next time.
Very good.
We don't talk for.